All right. Welcome to tonight's meeting of the zoning board, Wednesday, July 19th, 2023. We're going to begin the meeting.
Recording in progress.
Okay, I'm glad to hear it. In accordance with the provisions of Chapter 30A, Section 20 of the Massachusetts General Law, notice is hereby given that the Zoning Board of Appeals will meet on Wednesday, July 19th, tonight, 2023, at 7:00 PM in Meeting Room 124. Any additional public access to this meeting shall be done via Zoom. Online video conferences to join, follow the web link, and you can, or you can call in to order. Please be advised that this meeting will have audio and video recording for the future rebroadcasts on the Norfolk Cable Community Television. For more information on getting connected, use the video conference features at, follow all the links if you want. Tonight's meeting is hereby called into session. All right. First thing up was we had a hearing that we opened last month for Two Old Pond Street special permit. That was opened and it hasn't been closed, so anybody here from?
You do have Patrick.
Patrick?
Hello, yep. I'm the owner of Two Old Pond Street.
How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you?
Good, thanks. I'm not quite sure why we continue.
I don't think Patrick was here last time, so we didn't really have a, the applicant's discussion, so we wanted to give them an opportunity to come in.
All right, go ahead. What do you have to say?
Um, I don't really know what to say. I, I own Two Old Pond Street. It's a house kind of in the middle of the woods. I, I went through a contractor when I did the siding and the deck. Apparently he only pulled a permit for the siding and not the deck. And later on, it came to come to find out that I was notified, I did not live at Old Pond Street, so mail was being sent there, but it wasn't being delivered there. And I never got any notifications outside of email that, an email address that I wasn't checking that there was an issue. So finally it got forwarded to the address where I live at, Brantley Street, and I immediately called and tried to find out what was going on and tried to provide all the information that was required. I had to get a certified plot plan amongst a couple of other things. The deck is greater than 50 feet away from the street. However, on the plot plan, there's, there was a, there is a, some type of line, boundary line that actually goes into my property right through the front yard that looks like they're measuring from that point, which would require the special permit as I, as I've learned that anything greater than 50 feet from that line is what would require a special permit. Now, this, again, this is a deck that's in the middle of the woods, 50 feet away from the street, so I'm just, just here because I was, I was informed I had to be.
Okay. I think-
The deck is also built in the exact same location as the deck that was existing. It's not a new deck. It's just a repair, it's just a replacement of the, the deck that was already there.
Are you, are you changing the footprint at all?
The footprint, that, the footprint got bigger, but in the opposite direction of the street. So towards the woods where there is no boundary and, and-
In question.
-infliction or, or error where that, that's still, that's a hundred and something plus feet away from a property boundary.
Okay.
So it's, uh-
So, so this is, this is, this is realistically the boundary that's in question, and it's because he's going by, he was thinking by this- The right of way goes further back, and it sounds like if the applicant just said that he's, he's, he's built the deck and it's there now, and the photos look nice, and that there's been no further encroachment than, from what was existing, further encroachment on the bylaw, that he did go back, but that, that wasn't a violation of any bylaw, and he rebuilt on where he already had it, which technically was probably grandfathered. And at the time, they, because it's not paved-
Yep.
He was probably thinking they didn't even need a special permit for it because you go out there.
Yeah, right.
He wouldn't think that, but the right of way is swooping through his front lawn now, and so when they looked at it, it sounds like they spotted that, and they said, hmm, you should really get a special permit so no one can make you ever tear that thing down.
Pretty much sums it up.
Okay.
You're right. That's probably right. You know, just in terms of plan correction, it says 7.23, that's actually 37. It's not a, I mean-
Oh, okay.
So if you look at the plan, it's, it's, it scales off 37 feet from that, you know, just-
So the side yard is fine?
Yeah, the side, yes. The side yard is fine, it's just the front, but-
So the encroachment to the front is no closer than what was originally there?
Correct. Yep.
Yep. Just so you know, my whole house is in the 50-foot setback, so if, you know, from Secong Street, just, just so in case anybody ever really wanted to know.
Well, and this house here too, this is, yeah, you're, this is much original, I forget, it goes way back, this house.
Yeah. And, and in reality, it doesn't, it doesn't appear that you've done anything to disturb the look and feel of, you actually made it look better, so.
Right.
All right, what do we want to do with it? Do we have any other questions for him?
I have no other questions.
We had good pictures.
Yep.
Nice looking pictures.
Nice looking deck.
Nice looking deck. Is it enjoyable?
Thank you.
You're not using it, are you?
Yeah, it's beautiful. I love it. It's, it's super private. I'm very happy with that, that I, that I bought it there. It's, it's, I like the house a lot. I like the area.
Good.
Pre-drafted decision for you? Put it in front of you? I'm figuring this-
So this is, is that what this was?
That was, that's what that is, yes. I figure this could be-
Love it. One stop.
One stop, pretty simple. The only change we'll have to edit is the, we'll have to add you now and-
Okay. I think we can handle that.
We can handle that, that's the only-
I think we're all set. Do I hear a motion to close the hearing?
I move that we close the hearing for the applicant relative to case number 2023-04 regarding Two Old Pond Street.
Do I hear a second? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Well, thank you very much for your help. It looks like we just approved it to close it, and then we'll discuss it, and we already have it written up, so it's probably gonna be sent to you soon.
Okay, great. Thank you. I just want to make sure it's sent to the, the property where I received mail. I don't know if you have that correct address or not.
Your application says Liberty Street, 1311 Liberty Street, right three?
Yeah, that's the one, yep.
Don't let that go off the application.
We'll, we'll send it there then.
You're gonna need to get a copy from the town clerk anyway.
Yeah.
So usually, usually you get a digital copy. I don't know what you do, but usually digital copy, then you swing by and get it stamped by the town clerk after 90 days.
Okay, perfect. That works. Thank you so much.
Then you can file it with the registry.
Right.
Yeah, you have to file the original.
That's why, that's why you get the town clerk to give you a copy of it, so that you can go file it, and then all of your deck is super legit for the rest of time.
Perfect. Excellent.
There you go.
I'll send you those instructions, Patrick.
Uh, thank you so much. I appreciate everybody's time.
Thank you.
Good night.
Appreciate it. I'm glad it all worked out.
Do we need to vote the decision as well?
Thank you so much.
Yeah.
We do afterwards, so. Do we have any updates? We can deliberate then.
No updates.
We have a, we have a deliberation. Do we want to, we want to deliberate anything?
We can deliberate this one.
Why do we have so many people in there? What else do we have going on?
So he has probably, he's either renovating or it's a rental.
But he said, he said he was enjoying the deck.
I think he lives in that. Sorry.
Very complicated.
No, it's just, I just, you know, put it on there for your-
Okay.
-information purposes. I mean, they certainly could list it in, they-
Um-
You want to deliberate? Well, it depends.
I mean, we have a bunch of people in the audience. Can we just see what they want to say?
Yeah, you want to do that and then go back to deliberate afterwards?
Yeah, then we'll go back to this.
Sure.
Okay. Anybody in the peanut gallery on Zoom or here want to say something or have something questioned? We don't have anything on the agenda that-
For Cranberry Heights?
We don't have anything realistically on the agenda for Cranberry Heights.
Yeah, the, the-
Cranberry Heights is not, there has been only discussions and rumors of that it's coming, but we've got nothing permanent at this point. So there's nothing realistically for the zoning board to do right now with Cranberry Heights. Nothing. We, we got nothing at this point, so. And it still may not be until 2024 before they bring anything to us. So just so all of you all know, there's, we're not even in, in the loop at this point outside of it's there possibly. It's, right now, it's a-
Concept.
-pipe dream and a concept of something, but-
Yeah, the developer came to, you know, came to Town Hall and discussed the proposal to develop Cranberry Heights, which was originally before the planning board a few years ago as an open space subdivision, and changed it out to propose to develop as a 40B project. So they gave, provided to the board in terms of just informational purposes. Right now, they, they haven't applied for a project eligibility letter yet. They'll have to do that, go through that process, and then they'll be back before the town, and I suspect that it's probably not going to be at least six months from now with the, with the process in terms of getting what they need, but, so I'm sharing it as informational purposes.
Right.
Which some of the residents who were on the, I did have a Zoom meeting a few weeks ago about the Lawrence Street sidewalk, so I did present that plan, show the, the concept plan to them, some of the ones that are on there, some are on the, on tonight, that are on Zoom, or on that, but-
Yeah.
I mean, the, the layout that I saw looks like a nice layout, better than some that I've seen. At least there's two exits, you know, there's an in and an out, if you want to call it that. You know, not like the one that was approved up on Secong Street where you go up and you have to come back out the same way, so.
In terms of the concept, similar. The, the water, the water comes up Cranberry Meadow Road.
This has only got one entrance, drawing I see.
No, it has two.
No, it has two.
Cranberry Meadow.
Yeah, Cranberry Meadow, and then it comes up.
Yeah, you could-
Oh, hiding under here?
Yep.
All right.
Well, uh-
The hidden one.
Yeah. No, there's two, there's, there's an ingress and egress, if you want to call it that.
So, yeah, Elaine put it up on the, on the monitor so you can see it.
Yeah, that's the one I'm looking at. So there's one hiding in the tree area?
Yep. Yep, the tree area over there, and then one down in the bottom.
All right.
So that's the, at least the-
I guess it's all septic again, huh?
It would be septic, individual septic systems, the water would be looped through it, coming up, coming up Cranberry Meadow and looped out through Eagle Drive back out to Lawrence Street. There's not much ruin, there-
There's really the-
No real-
There's really no open space with it.
There is not, no.
So it's just kind of more of a subdivision set, a conventional subdivision, just with smaller lots.
I sent Rich some comments earlier, but from a housing production perspective and from a 40B perspective, this does nothing for the town. This does nothing to diversify our housing stock. I have some doubts as to how the state will respond to this, and I also, who's going to be their subsidizer? Obviously mass development. But this, I mean, this is the beginning, so it's not a real plan, but I would far prefer to see something in the multifamily rental program, either, you know, townhouses or small multifamily that utilizes the land on the site. I understand the last go, they had some concerns about blasting. I can clearly see that Eagle Brook is right there, that you would want to see kind of more compact, less pavement, you know, we don't, we'll eventually inherit this road, I'm sure, as a town, and we don't necessarily need that amount of roadway connect, or constructed either, because it's, you know, kind of just a future burden. I don't think that fire will love the stub at the end. They might, but I don't think so. And so I think there's a long way to go here, but-
There's a long way.
But I also have some questions just based on what I'm seeing, what the size on the water main is, because that's probably, is that driving part of this?
So the wa-
What are their water issues?
Yeah, so it, it will depend where it goes. I mean, this was, when it came before the planning board a few years ago, there was, you know, the thought that it could serve as a location for another tank in town for water supply.
It's high ground?
Yeah, the backside of it, where that little, those two lots are.
Okay.
And they call this that?
It doesn't rule out a water tank.
What's that?
So that doesn't rule out a water-
No, no, it certainly doesn't. No, but to answer your question, if it was a water, it'd probably be a 12-inch, you know, there, that, that one size wouldn't hate the way it is right now.
Okay, so, I mean, that's not the worst thing that ever happens, not far-
No, no.
Not far from the water supply to build a pipe.
Right.
I thought this was more they're trying to connect off of Eagle Drive or something like that, and it's going to be a four-inch main or something really crazy from the 50s.
No, no, no. No, so there's no water on Eagle Drive right now.
Okay. This is all on well? They're all on well?
They're all on wells, yep. So this, this comes off the wa, while you, the last ZBA meeting when you were talking about Lawrence Street, the Wade's Crossing-
Yeah.
That project is bringing the water main up Lawrence Street to the end, to their Wade's Crossing entrance, which-
They could hook it.
This would, this would feed off of that water line. That's a 12-inch, that's in Lawrence Street.
How's their pressure? Are they all right?
No, that's something we need to take a close look at. The pressure is definitely a potential concern there.
Yeah, I just, you know-
And there are, there is a mapped endangered species there too, so there's-
There's, I mean, there's reason to conserve more on this site. This is especially like, I mean, this is a nightmare amount of lawn to be putting next to what it's next to, on top of the road issue. These are my own feelings.
No, I would agree with you, but, I mean, having the two egresses in, if we could get open space and less lawn and all that kind of stuff, it may be bogus.
You could do a guy just like this, block here, block here, block here, block here, leave all this alone, water tower, if you needed a little service road.
Absolutely.
We could have, like, have, you know, their little dog park and maybe some garden.
Call it a day. It'd be great.
I completely agree with you.
I mean, we could certainly, 50 single-family units, I mean, even from a traffic impact, although it's two, these are, this is like our, you know, in terms of residential, these houses are kind of our leader on, you know, trip generators, because there'll be three, four, five-bedroom houses, which is going to get you two to five cars.
Yep.
And so, I mean, just as a thought, if you could keep the unit count somewhere similar, even not, you know, even if you opted to, you know, somewhere in those 75 rooms, you would still have lower trip generation than this.
Well, you get up at 75, but that's 70, but 25 of them are only one bedrooms, too.
Yeah, which is why you don't have the same kind of trip generation off of a, off of something like that, which I think would be better for the people who are already over here.
Yep.
So the bedroom is probably on the, a little bit on the lower side because it's in the zone too, so it'll be limiting a little bit in terms of, you know, nitrogen loading, you know, the size of the systems, so probably the three, four.
Be a 40B though, so you can do some more creative things with the system design.
Could, yeah, could, yep.
As long as they show that they can have the same capacity. It's Title V.
Well, they're, right now, they're over a 50-unit, so they have to be a, technically, if it was a shared development, they have to go to a shared thing, if I remember correctly.
Shared system?
They have to go to a shared system over 50, correct?
Well, that's, they're proposed as individual systems there.
So they're completely proposed as individual lots and not-
Yeah, this is, this is a single-family development. These, there are lot lines.
Okay.
There's a lot of lines, single-family, detached, fee simple.
Okay.
And so, this, which is why it's not like a real winner for us, because we're only going to get to count 25% of the units, but if they alter their program and alter what they build, we get 100% of them, so if they build 50, we get all 50, which would be desirable to, what, 13, 12?
Right. Yeah, right. Exactly.
So, I mean, if they're sitting in concept right now, I'd like to see, I mean, I personally, but it's something that's more useful, because we don't have any rental. Like, the whole purpose of 40B isn't like your alternative to local zoning, the whole purpose of 40B is to build housing that meets unmet local housing needs. We don't have any, we don't have a whole lot, I mean, we have single families, we've got a lot of those, but we don't have a lot, especially in new rental. And so I think that would be far more useful, because we have people who want to downsize that don't necessarily want to have like the whole house situation, and we also have people who like, you know, I call it divorced dad housing, as a divorcee myself, but, you know, you need, if you want custody, like, you need bedrooms, and, you know, you don't necessarily land into like a house, so they, you know, not everybody wants to take their kids out of the school system. So that's kind of my, my personal spiel on this. I saw this and I was like, eh, I'd like to see something different, and I think that if they're in pre-concept, it's, it's a good time to, you know, change it.
Is it, so this is possibly under the 40B versus conventional?
Yeah.
They did come conventionally.
Originally came, yes, it did come originally conventional under the-
How many units was that?
It was 22, as an open space subdivision, but the inclusionary bylaw was changed, so this is 2019. There was some issues in terms of, it was ultimately in, at the end, towards the approval of the planning board, but issues were raised in terms of at the time, which still are relevant, of bringing the water up Cranberry Meadow, that blasting was need to be done, that it could impact private wells. That, that doesn't go away necessarily, that concern, but that was the concern then, and so they withdrew it with prejudice.
Yep.
And then, and this property was passed over twice by the town to buy, because this was chapter land.
Yep.
But, but in terms of the change in the inclusionary, it increased the amount affordability to 20% for anything over 20 units. So they kind of did a math exercise and said, well, 20 or 25, and override all local zoning, and that's-
That's what they're doing.
That's what's being proposed.
Okay.
This is also, again, like, the starting point, like, this isn't necessarily-
Oh, right.
It's not the finish point, no, yeah.
The one up on Secong Street, where it started out at 104 homes, they've got 44 going in or something.
Yeah, I mean, you know, we don't see anything in, like contours, we don't see anything in terms of soil, and so-
It's conceptual.
Yeah, so, again, there's, I-
There's a lot of elevation there, if you're dealing.
Really?
It's on the hill.
Town should have bought it from Park.
Well, I mean, you know, we got some CPA money, I'm sure, for affordable housing that hasn't been spent, because of maybe, that could help support a few things that might need to happen to facilitate something better, pipes, but-
Anybody have any questions from the, the gallery? Yep, Michael, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Mike Chu to see six Eagle Drives on the Director Butter to this property, and I've lived here for a long time, and this is either the fourth or fifth attempt to develop this property, and see how far it goes, and I agree, it's a first, a first step, but I just want to make sure I'm clear, I understand where they are in the process. And we started off the meeting saying there's nothing to talk about, and we talked about it for 10 or 15 minutes, so I appreciate the discussion. So they've just made an informal inquiry to the town just to sort of let us know, or they actually asked, or what part of the process are we in? Are they supposed to be getting actual comments back from the town on an official basis, or that was just a?
No, those were, those are unofficial comments.
Okay.
In true transparency, they asked if the town would want to sponsor it as a, a LEP project.
Yep.
Not like this.
So they were informed that the answer would be no, and so they're, they're proposing it to go through mass housing to get a, as a, get a project eligibility letter.
Really? Mass housing as their subsidizer? Not, wow.
I believe so.
Really? I don't think-
I could be wrong.
I don't think mass housing will love this. Maybe.
I don't know. I could check and see if I'm 100% sure.
Yeah, I wouldn't perceive them as the easier one.
Yeah, was in, to answer your question, yes, informal.
So, so that, the next step in the process would be they go, if it's mass housing, in fact, it would be sponsored, they'd go to them, make a submittal, and then come to the, come before this board for a series of hearings.
Correct.
Yes.
And then, as you know, Rich, as you mentioned before, you know, the prior, and this is the same ownership group, same developer as the last go around back in-
Partially.
Okay.
Yep. Mr. Bailey is still involved with it, but he brought in another partner.
Okay. So that was an open space subdivision, as you said, had 22 lots, and I know obviously going in 40B allows them to, you know, bypass certain local bylaws and zoning regs or whatever the case may be. Are they also allowed to ignore, and someone alluded to it, the natural heritage? It is an endangered species habitat that's been documented and is in, in natural heritage's system. Are they just allowed to just completely ignore that as part of this process as well?
The short answer is no.
Anybody have any questions from the gallery? Yep, Michael, I see your hand.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm Mike Judas, see six Eagle Drives on the direct to butter to this property. And I've lived here for a long time, and this is either the fourth or fifth attempt to develop this property and see how far it goes. And I agree, it's a first, a first step. But I just want to make sure I'm clear, I understand where they are in the process. And we started off the meeting saying, there's nothing to talk about, and we talked about it for 10 or 15 minutes. So I appreciate the discussion. So they've just made an informal inquiry to the town, just to sort of let us know? Or they actually asked, or what part of the process are we in? Are they supposed to be getting actual comments back from the town on an official basis? Or that was just a?
No, those were, those are unofficial comments.
Okay.
In true transparency, they asked if the town would want to sponsor it as a lip project.
Yep.
And.
Not like this.
So they were informed that the answer would be no. And so they're, they're proposing it to go through mass housing to get a, as a, get a project to hold the ability letter.
Really? Mass housing as their subsidizer? Not, wow.
I believe so.
Really? I don't think.
I could be wrong.
I don't think mass housing will love this. Maybe.
I don't know. I could check and see. I'm not 100% sure.
I wouldn't perceive them as the easier.
Yeah, was in, to answer your question, yes, informal.
So that, the next step in the process would be they go, if it's mass housing, in fact, it would be sponsored. They'd go to them, make a submittal, and then come to the, come before this board for a series of.
Correct.
Yes.
Obviously.
Yep.
And then, as you know, Rich, as you mentioned before, you know, the prior, and this is the same ownership group, same developer as the last go around back in?
Partially.
Okay.
Yep. Mr. Bailey is still involved with it, but he brought in another partner.
Okay. So that was an open space subdivision, as you said, had 22 lots. And I know, obviously, going in 40B allows them to, you know, bypass certain local bylaws and zoning regs or whatever the case may be. Are they also allowed to ignore, and someone alluded to it, the natural heritage? It is an endangered species habitat that's been documented and is in, in natural heritage's system. Are they just allowed to just completely ignore that as part of this process as well?
The short answer is no. You're still subject to, they're still subject to a, all of the state's environmental regulations, more or less.
The entire site is within the limits of, not an estimated habitat, but priority habitat. It's a marbled salamander.
The priority habitats are a state designation that is from a different program, so it doesn't necessarily offer protection like a wetland habitat would that comes with buffers around it. This is kind of a technical answer for you, but it's, the shortest answer to your question is that some things are in play and some things are not in play. And so, like, wetlands regulations are generally still in play on the state level, but not necessarily the local level. If you have certain habitat areas of certain species, they may require a certain buffer, which again is not a very satisfying answer, but is kind of the most sufficient answer I can give. It really depends. But again, absent of seeing any mapped areas, like I said, this is, you know, this is just a concept plan, so that we can't really see what's going on there and where those buffers would be. It's hard to even start commenting on it, but there's a different, although 40B, the local zoning doesn't necessarily apply, a lot of regulations still do, like Title V, for example. And you have to at least meet the same sort of capacity as Title V, even if you can build an alternative system. But, do they have a housing consultant yet?
They do.
Okay.
Mark O'Hagan?
Okay. Okay.
Forget the name of that.
So they're getting a little closer, but typically what happens is they float a few ideas, you know, potentially for reaction, they get more serious, they lock down, you know, what they think they might do somewhat, and with concept, develop a pro forma, start applying for, to one of four subsidizing agencies. Then the town is notified if one of those agencies does approve it. And so if that does happen, like Rich said, that's still probably six months away. At that point, there's a formal comment process, that all municipal departments and boards are invited to comment. And I suspect we'll have many comments. We issue a formal, you know, a formal, formal comments, more or less. Usually when you comment on it at that point, you, as a ZBA, we're going to look mostly at whether or not the development meets or advances local housing needs. And so is the development appropriate in terms of, you know, who are our priority people to be housed? I know the housing production plan isn't done yet.
That's right.
No, it's done.
Oh, it's done. So we'll be, you know, basically, anything that we respond to will draw back to the housing production plan in terms of goals and data. Like, you know, if they came in with this, we'd probably bring forward data about our housing mix that, you know, demonstrates that we have a large preponderance of single-family homes and a large preponderance of ownership, and this might not be the most useful. I would think. And so that's a long answer, I'm sorry.
Any, any other questions? Hearing none, seeing none. Thank you for discussion on this. I think we're just wait and hear what's next at this point. It's nice to know ahead of time when people are talking about different things, and that's kind of why this was brought to our attention tonight and stuff. But in reality, it's, there's nothing to be done at this point. It's just more of concepts. And sometimes developers will throw crazy concepts out there to just kind of irk everybody so that they can kind of get their way when they come to go do what they want to do. But I, I know the Secoong Street, 104, ruffled a lot of feathers, and then all of a sudden it was down to 44, and everybody was like, oh, okay, that's better. And in reality, they were looking to get 40 the whole time, so they did good.
I don't recommend that strategy.
No, but. But it happened.
Any builders in the viewing audience, don't do that, please.
No, but I.
But it's certainly a strategy.
They're asking the town if they were interested in certain things, and, okay, if you're not, then this is the concept we're looking at. Well, now maybe you got to look at it, so.
Well, I think, you know, they've also been at it for a while, though, and if there's an opportunity for a smooth process and a, you know, partnership, most developers will take it.
Oh, absolutely.
So if you're clear about what you want, I haven't met too many that are like, go pound sanding. You know, let's do this the hard way.
Yeah, I think Michael said they've been there four or five times, so I ready, so. It's almost, you, you almost, in one sense, wonder why it's been four or five times.
Oh, the land resists.
It's a very difficult parcel. If you're not.
Yeah, that's what I'm thinking. So, I, I mean, so if it's, I mean, if it's that difficult, is 51 homes actually feasible? No, probably not, if it's that difficult. I mean.
Yeah, he's, he's.
This is a pipe dream.
For different developers over the years, but it's a very difficult property, as someone alluded to earlier. It drops off very steeply toward Eagle Brook and Slattery Broad property. So there's a lot of topography to deal with, a lot of ledge, so it's, it's not an easy site to build.
The, the good lands are all either being built on or have hayfields on them right now, so. And hopefully they'll stay hayfields.
Need more hayfield.
Yeah, I need more hayfields.
Wood, more everything.
Well, thank you. I think that's it. Do we have anything else that we need to do minutes? Did you guys all read the minutes?
14 acres.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes drafted by Elaine.
Yep.
Secretary, dated June, the minutes from June 21st, 2023, is drafted.
I read them, I didn't find anything.
No.
They were another lovely set.
They seem to be on.
They're on point.
They seem to be accurate.
You're acting to the point. Somebody second it?
I'll second it.
There you go.
Deep thought over there.
Well, I was going to ask a question, but we'll ask it afterwards.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
All in favor? Aye. There you go. What's your question?
Why are the RTF files? All your Word files?
I've been out of work for a long time. Why are they RTF?
They don't, they don't come through as that for me. They come through as Word documents. It might be your plugin that's set up with Google Drive. You need to take this thing in, my friend. This thing is not user-friendly. It is rejecting you like the land is rejecting that project.
What do you have over there?
He's got a Surface, but he's also got an iPhone, and they don't necessarily want to talk to each other. And I think he needs to get on Reddit and ask the nerds on Reddit. That's what I think.
I'll get it, so.
That's what happens when you let the grandkids play with you.
Oh.
Oh, they don't play with my computer. Uh-uh. They got their own iPads. They got their own iPads.
It's tough enough with Google and Microsoft.
But it's listing as a rich text file, RTF.
So you want to go back to the decision?
Yeah, let's go back to the decision.
So I'm going to go.
Google and whatever.
Yeah, you can change it with the.
Okay.
So only he's going to.
They bring him in.
She's going to change the names to protect the guilty.
Yep.
Okay.
What is he changing?
She's changing the names.
The signature page, she's going to.
Oh, I see. Sure.
Josephine wasn't here, and Joe wasn't here.
Then move up.
But we're going to move Courtney up.
I want to think that Google file.
Is there any major zoning going through the next town meeting?
Yeah, I got that. Yeah, I got that. I got that email today.
Oh, I didn't get an email about that.
They, they asked if there was anything we needed to put on the warrant.
Oh, oh, boy. I mean, it's always just around the corner.
Yeah.
If there's no real zoning action going on, we should do our fix to the special permit issue on these nonconformities, so these folks don't have to come see us anymore. That's a real small potatoes, kind of.
Save them a lot of aggravation costs.
Yeah, when nothing else is going on, kind of town meeting, that's a good housekeeping one that I, we're going to. It's like, if there's any request that we could put in, that would be my special request, is to quit hauling these single-family homeowners in over these, because if they're not exacerbating the nonconformity, why, you know, why do we care?
Right. Creates a lot of extra steps, cost delays for them, and they're all caught at the end. They shouldn't have already built the deck. You see it all the time, but I was ready to start, and then I went to get my permit, and lo and behold, they're going to come before you folks. And then if we inconvened them with a delay for some reason, then now they're down 30, 60 days, and P O P reads and all that. It's a lot.
Have you seen, no, that, that's a good point. Have you seen any, in terms of nonconforming structure, allow for a special permit to allow for encroachments?
I have, usually within prescribed boundaries. If it's, if it is legitimate nonconformity, there's, I've seen it for FAR, where there are special permits for existing structures to exceed the normal FAR.
Because again, it was interesting enough, I was drafting this, I was drafting this stuff today in terms of this deal with some of the houses you've, you've seen before, for variances, when they're.
Right.
Yeah.
They're, they have no option. It would be nice to have a special permit option, something you, you know, the criteria fits better than.
Yeah, I mean, we could either adjust the definition of nonconformity locally. So, I mean, you still want your conformance with state law, but then we can, I don't really like to regulate through definitions, but you can put exceptions in there for certain things, so that you could say, but in this case, if this is, you know, if this deficient front setback exists prior to, you know, or in the case of like a realigned road, it shall not be considered, you know, a nonconformity, you know, a nonconforming condition. You can do things like that to kind of wiggle it around. Or you can, in the nonconformity section, also write in special permits that, like I said, fund within prescribed boundaries. So if it's like within 10 feet, it's a special permit. If you do X, you know, like a counterbalancing amenity, or, I mean, that's typically what you would see. But, yeah, you can make that. I mean, frankly, you could also just make it a special permit condition under the setback section, too. You could flatten out the table. There's like a lot of ways to sit. Not to get Valley Girl about it, but yeah, you can do a few things with that.
Yeah. Well, I'll send you what I put together.
Yeah, yeah, we could.
Because I did put a draft together to start with this, and, but also the accessory buildings, remember the?
Yep.
Yeah.
You know, because, you know, with lots here that are so large, that front setback, you know, it comes up so often with sheds and accessory buildings that.
Yeah, I think it would be nice if we could take care of some of these, and, in my opinion, not to continue to abuse our residents and our neighbors and not, not abuse the code.
Yeah.
On the front yard setback for accessory structures, the most common is just to do a half requirement for an accessory versus a principal. Usually you see it more for side and rear, but our front yard setbacks are so big that you could either write it based on the alignment of the existing structure of a certain date, or you could write it, you could just reduce it to half the required front yard setback for an accessory structure, or quarter, whatever fraction you want to use, kind of arbitrary, but there's a few easy ways to.
I like the, I like the, for accessory buildings.
No closer than the.
No closer than the existing front plane of the house or something of that sort. Not necessarily the stairs and that kind of stuff, but the front plane.
Yeah, and so you can.
So in other words, you don't want, you don't want, you know, you don't want somebody building a barn on their front yard.
No, no, right.
You know what I'm saying? Or, or even a chicken coop, for that matter. We live in Norfolk, so people do have chicken coops, but that kind of stuff, you don't want that coming into the, the front yard. It may be closer than 50 feet, because, like, my house is 12 feet off of Secoong Street, I think. So you, you sit back and you go, okay. In, in reality, if I need to meet the offset, my barn is almost in the, almost, you know.
Oh, mine definitely is.
Mine's not, but it's close.
Yeah, no.
But if I wanted to put a, a garage, a detached garage, right close to my house or on, I'm, I'm, there's no way. I have to put it back where the barn is. Now, why am I walking?
Aesthetically, we could have, and we do have, you could have, like you suggested, accessory building 15 feet off the street, which looks fine, because it's parallel to the existing home. And you could have something 40 feet back, which is in front of the other house. Even though it's 40 feet back, the 15-foot back looks better. It's aesthetically more appealing to most people, obviously.
You can also, I mean, depending on where you, I'm like, you can do all kinds of different rules based on design, because you can always have, like, not to exceed the front facade of the house, you know, a half setback. You can also give a bonus if you do rotate, you know, you can put it rotated. If the garage doors don't face the street, basically, you can come closer, because that's aesthetically the issue. People just don't like big doors facing the street. So if you rotate, it's not really, because, like, there's.
Right.
There's, you know, I'm just like, might be biased, because I have a colonial that has a barn that's off-center from the house, that's in the front yard setback, but like, I'm just like, you can do it tastefully, but it does depend on how it's rotated. But, so you can kind of, you can write different, but basically, you can also just say, door shouldn't face the street and just call it a day.
Right. The other, the other one is the, the corner lots, where you have.
You have two front yard setbacks.
Two, two front yard setbacks.
Yep.
In reality, the address front facade should be that 50-foot setback. The other one, you might want to have more than the normal 25, maybe go to 35, but not necessarily 50. Do something like that, because that, two 50s, I mean, you're down to nothing, nothing left on a lot if you have a, you know, an acre and a half lot, and then the corner lot, that's, that eats up a lot of space. You can't build anything in there, you know, so.
50 is also, you know, a pretty sizable front yard setback. If it's the character of the neighborhood, people will set the house back that far naturally. If you're doing kind of a newer style development, though, it's kind of going to preclude you from doing, you know. More people kind of prefer a bigger backyard and a smaller front yard. And our setbacks, and most zoning setbacks, are big front yards, small, small rear yard setbacks. So it's kind of reverse of people's taste. It's a thought.
But there's, there's something, I mean, we, we had that one that came before us on, I think it was on the corner of Noon Hill. They had, they, because of the, the setback, they, their other lot then wasn't conforming because of it, if I remember correctly, or something. But I think there's, there's some things that are.
The Historic Commission.
Right, that's right.
Yes.
Yeah, you're right, yep.
Airhouse.
Yep.
Yep.
Sorry, didn't.
So I mean, these are things we faced, and I think there's, there's ways to.
No, your suggestion might be, that might be a lighter lift for the fall.
Yeah.
Then, I don't know, this, no, I agree. I, I agree, do one.
Something would help.
Certainly help.
Keep, I, I think if we keep putting things out there.
It's always a work in progress.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
I think it's always good to have something on the docket. Worst-case scenario is that they shoot it down, but at least it's there, you know, we're doing something.
I mean, most people, if you say your intent is to make this easier for homeowners to, you know, just the average guy, this isn't, doesn't particularly benefit developers or anything, I think. I think most people can kind of just get done with the intent.
Yeah, that's, that's exactly what it is.
I mean, unless.
And it's not costing them $55,000.
Right, right.
There's that. There's that, but should be.
We got a little off track from the, it's a good comment. I like it.
Sorry, sorry.
But in terms of.
Never linear here.
Delivering the, I don't think you've finished that decision.
Yep.
It's all done.
Wait, did you vote it?
Yep, yep, we voted it.
I wasn't paying attention.
We did, voted it, voted the minutes.
Oh, all right.
I guess I wasn't paying.
Tony was running smoke screen, it's all right.
Yeah, I, you're smoking here over here.
He didn't hear it for the record.
I'll make a motion. I think I did, and it was seconded, then we get to discussion.
Yep. Oh, then we may not have done the.
Did you vote it?
I don't remember.
Second, I don't know if.
We got that far.
We got to the second.
Yeah.
All in favor? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I think we did the ayes.
I think we did that, too.
Yeah, it was kind of like a 1, 2, 3, aye, yeah.
All right, so you double voted, if that's what you're thinking?
I think so.
All right, so we'll go back to the tape, then.
Elaine listens to them.
I think Elaine had it.
As long as we got it voted.
Okay.
I think you did.
So Elaine is just going in and changing the signature from Joe, because he was on the minutes.
We already took care of it.
Yep, but so you, no.
We've already signed it, we already did.
Yeah, we signed it, I think she's making copies.
Elaine's making copies.
We're way ahead of you, guys.
Yeah, I guess you are, so that's it.
That's it. Anything on the upcoming hearings that we should hear about, that we should know about prior to?
Probably three cases that, uh, what we're talking about tonight.
Two of the hearings that you'll have next month are, the variance has expired, so it's.
Oh, dear.
That's why they're back, because they didn't get a, you know, they didn't file for an extension within the time.
Subscribe time period?
Yeah, so that's why 1 and 5 and 8, West Birch.
I remember 1 and 5, I don't recall West Birch, but.
How long?
West Birch was the, the porch, the deck, that was literally a, less than a foot off of the road, and then they had the patio area where they were adding the sunroom and enclosure.
No, I remember.
Yeah, and then 77 North Street is just on point, we got, we're talking about.
Okay.
They're redoing the, uh, front little vestibule, if you will.
Oh, poor friends.
Yeah, it does catch these folks, and you, you know.
Yeah.
Till you go through it, it's, it's time and money and aggravation, and there's no benefit that I think to the town to keep these like this, and no benefit to them.
It's going back, you know, same, and they did check the stairs are, or, excuse me, the steps are within that, they're less than 30 square feet, so that's not. Yeah.
Bummer.
Right.
Well, if it's a fairly straightforward one, maybe we could plan to discuss, vote it, sign it.
Maybe there could be a decision.
Yeah, no, we'll tee it up, so you can just do it.
Tee it up.
We'll tee it up.
All in favor to adjourn to August 16th? Somebody make a motion?
I move that we adjourn, close the hearing.
All right.
Aye.
Second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That's what we did.